Okay guys, we should be on Facebook. Let me just verify real quick. Yep.
Where are we at on Facebook?
We are on the City of Darlington Facebook page. Do not unmute it from the Facebook page. Or it will create some feedback loop for us.
Yes ma'am.
You should be able to go to your, the bottom left of your screen there and click on where it's got a little light signature that says unmute. That should help you. Go to...
It might be the top, Howard.
Excuse me?
It's the top. If you...
I'm sorry.
She probably needs to rotate it to the side and then she'll see some options at the top of the screen.
Alright. So go to the top of the screen they're saying now and you'll see some options up there for volume. Howard Nettles, you're muted. He was saying he didn't think anybody could hear him. Can you see it yet?
Yeah, I'll probably keep mine muted until I need to talk. It'll help with all...
Okay, Howard, you got it? Howard Nettles, you got it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, can you guys hear me now? I want to make sure. Your roll call. Okay, so I'll go back on mute.
How about, hey, well... Bill Lynch, will you check Sheila Backus' audio?
Yes, she's good.
Okay, alright, great. Alright, very good. See you later.
Sheila, can you hear us?
I do. I hear you.
Hey, Captain Lemon.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Just tell me when you want me to start recording the session. Someone's gonna probably need to, um... Let me see if I got John Seeger's number. I'll call him because I don't think his audio is working.
Elaine? Elaine, do you hear me?
Sheila, she's got her volume muted or her audio.
Your thing is on mute, Elaine. Take it off mute.
No, um, Bill put me on mute.
Okay, I hear you now.
Because I can hear you.
Okay, I hear you now.
I hear you now. Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, um, I need John Seeger's phone number. Who has that?
It's 843-616-5125.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Pat.
You're welcome, Bones, man.
Take notice. I'll try not to look too serious.
How you doing? Chief, how are ya? Good to see you. Oh, gosh.
Hey, Ms. Elaine, hey, everyone else. I've got my phone on, I've got my laptop on mute.
Oh.
Yeah. Hope everyone's well.
Oh, that's good.
Elaine?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing fine. How you doing?
They said this was a remarkable event. You know what?
Oh, oh, that I'm on time and I'm...
Now you're hurt.
Yeah.
I don't know. You've always been on time the last three months. I was thinking that should give you a hard time.
I know, but yeah, but this I have to make sure. I got, I got to let Bryant know that I can hang with him a little bit with this technology, not much.
Everybody's doing great. Everybody...
Quite impressed, Ms. Elaine. I'm quite impressed. You just remember that mute.
I'm impressive myself.
Kevin Etheridge is the one we were worried about.
I'm here. I made it. Are we actually starting at what, what time? 6:15, 6:30?
6:15 for special meeting.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Doesn't matter.
Hey, oh, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Any way to mute Lee?
Please mute Lee. Please.
Lee, I have to say you're looking good with that backlight.
Yeah. Yeah. Trying to keep the animals off of me, so.
Fucking out.
Hi Lisa. John, you made it.
I'm here.
Got Tony M. I don't know about John S.
Oh, yeah, I was talking about John Seeger. Yeah, I saw you and Bryant. Let me put my phone on mute. Lord, I know. Feel like it is in meetings.
Freddie, can you hear us?
Did all of you get that alarm? At 4:45?
I think everybody's still on.
I think the mayor's on mute, isn't he?
Freddie's audio is not on mute. I don't think he's connected via his audio yet.
And Alex is on mute.
Well, I can't see any of those buttons, so I'm not touching anything.
Hey, hey, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Can I mention something, something to them before we get started or have we already began?
It's already Facebook Live.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I mean, I could disconnect Facebook Live and then...
No, 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 no.
You can message in the group.
Okay.
I would message in the group. I would message in the group, Mr. Washington.
Oh, okay. Did you hear that, Chief?
There was a portion of our report that I inadvertently left out and I didn't realize it until today, so I'll email it to you tomorrow. I accept my apologies.
So we're waiting till 6:15? Oh, okay. It should be back now, right? It's 6:18. Minutes.
Are you ready to call an order?
I believe so.
Howard.
I'm starting the recording.
Okay. We have everybody on?
I'm here.
Bill.
I'm here.
Reed here.
Freddie, I think, and Ms. Priggin are the only two that I don't know if they've got audio yet.
Okay. Howard, can we go start?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we want to call emergency ordinance 2020-02 electronic meeting to order. We say a quick prayer and then I'll turn it over to Howard. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this time, dear Lord, thank you for this technology that we have to be able to bring us all together safely, dear Lord. Watch over and guide directness in all we say and do tonight, dear Lord. Help us that everything grows smoothly. Just name our prayer. Amen.
Okay, we have to adopt an emergency ordinance in order to have electronic meetings. I'll read the, uh, the main points that are under section two, that the city will operate under a pandemic continuity of operations plans which you approved last month. The city manager is hereby authorized to deny, cancel, or revoke city issued permits for events involving gatherings of more than three persons as long as the emergency ordinance is in effect. Law enforcement is hereby authorized to disperse groups of three or more persons. Public meetings in the traditional format are to be suspended. Council members as well as city commission members and city board members may attend and vote during such meetings via telephone or video conferencing. The city will provide a call line or video conference by which all members of the public are able to participate and address the governing body. The city will post timely written notice and inform members of the public of the method by which they may participate remotely. The city will distribute an electronic copy of the agenda packet to be considered equivalent to the fiscal agenda required under the Freedom of Information Act. And the city will record the telephonic or electronic meeting and provide the public with access to such recording.
We need to make a motion to approve that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright. I make a motion that we approve this emergency ordinance 2020-02 for electronic meetings of the city council.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
I believe that was Sheila that seconded it. Everybody in favor?
Yes. Aye.
Any noes? We'll have to ask for noes because, okay, I think it's 100%. Alright. And I believe this part of the meeting is adjourned and we'll start back at 6:30.
Amen.
I guess we motion to adjourn?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
This is Howard.
I'll second.
Everybody's in favor to adjourn?
Yes.
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 Alright, 100%. We'll return back at 6:30. Thank you, Brian.
Yes.
Thank you. That's the, that's the main number for... Little Futian, but you're not a Little Futian, you're important. 616-4284.
Hey, Curtis.
Yeah.
So, in the next meeting, um, should we do, will it be easier to do roll call?
Yeah, I'll call that out in a minute and tell everybody what order they'll be in. It's what, there's the piece of paper that I have to read.
Alright, thank you.
Let's get everybody to say in order.
Thank you, Mr. Nettles.
Alright, it's 6:30. We're all ready to roll?
Okay, I'm starting the recording.
Okay. Everybody at your desk, I believe. Let's see how it goes.
Do we need to have a roll call before we get the meeting started?
I can. Mr. Seeger's, you're here?
Yes.
Mrs. Backus?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Mr. Milling?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nettles?
Present.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
And Curtis Boyd is here. I think that's, we need to call everybody else. Is that all? The department heads and all are here. City lawyers, here, Kim Etheridge.
I'm here.
Okay. I think that should be fine. Alright, we'll call the order to the meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. We need to read this first. I appreciate everybody tuning in today, those that are out there on Facebook watching us. While this is not our normal means of holding a meeting, we will continue to work for our citizens. We ask for your patience during this first digital meeting. This meeting will be conducted in a respectful manner. Please turn the ringer on your cellphone off. Please do not interrupt anyone or all the audio will cut out and no one will hear anything. You may dial in to listen to the meeting at 253-215-8782. I'll read that number one more time. You can dial in at 253-215-8782. My phone with the meeting ID number, okay, the meeting ID number, I'll read it twice. The meeting ID number is 572314798. To maintain order, all phone and participants will be muted. If you unmute yourself, you will be ejected from the meeting. All comments must be communicated via Facebook Messenger or chat to be read by city staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. You may send comments in advance of the meeting on any topic and on the public hearing question. Votes for council will be done in roll call fashion. Order I just called, Mrs. Seeger's, Mr. Seeger's, Mrs. Backus, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Milling, Mr. Nettles, Mrs. Reed, and myself. Mrs. Rock will read out any comments or questions that have been mailed or emailed in prior to the meeting. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the city's website, www.darlingtonsconline.com. That's darlingtonsconline.com under council minutes. It may take up to 48 hours for the recording to be uploaded. We will indicate on the city administration Facebook page when the post is complete. Thank you for your patience with us during this extraordinary time. Alright, and, uh, thank you everybody for tuning in today. I have Pastor Kevin Collins want to say the prayer for us tonight as we begin. Okay.
Lord, you are the same as yesterday and today and forever. And that means that our confidence is built upon you. And that we trust that you hold us in your hands. Lord, you have given government for the, for our good. That we may live, lead, lead, that we may live godly and peaceful lives, dignified in every way. We thank you, Lord, for these public servants who meet today to make decisions that impact who we are as a community. We pray gracious Lord for you to guide and to give wisdom. We pray gracious Lord that everything that they do will be filled with your love. And we ask that as we look to this peculiar time in which we live, where so many lives are impacted. That you would remember those doctors and nurses and other healthcare providers who are working hard to protect and to heal and to renew life. And Lord, we pray with thanksgiving. And Lord, we pray with thanksgiving for the courage that they had. And we pray, Lord, that their healing, that you would work through their gifts to bring about healing and that you would protect them. Lord, we pray that you would give to us in this time, a love that binds all things together in harmony.
Hallelujah.
This is the time for us to come together as, as a community. And to look at the hope and the joy that you have set before us, and to know that you raise up people who can overcome and who can know victory. Lord, fill us with that hope that never surrenders and that continues to fight and that can love, even when we may be weary of the world and feel like we cannot love anymore. But we know that it is your love that overcomes all fears. This we pray in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen. Beautiful prayer.
All right, so the pledge of allegiance. We stand up, I don't want everybody to see us, but we'll do it. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justice, liberty, and justice. All right, number three, we have approval for minutes for the city council meeting, March the second, March the third, six PM, at six thirty PM. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion that we approve the minutes for council meeting on March second and March third and sixth. I second.
A minute, a minute. Okay, we got a second?
I second.
Everybody in favor? Do we have?
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
All right, any noes? All right, all in favor then, it's passed. All right, number four, do we have a motion to approve meeting agenda for tonight?
Sure. I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda for our city council meets, meeting tonight, April seventh, two thousand twenty.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Elaine, you out of order, you gotta get in your spot. You in somebody else's spot.
All right, let's try it this way. I'll tell you what, do a minute. All right, we have approval for a meeting agenda for number four. Now, when we do it, just say your name and then say aye, that way we know, everybody out there on Facebook can see what we're doing, who we are. We're all learning as we go, it's okay, everybody's doing. All right, number five, report of standing committees, going to downtown revitalization association, Ms. Lisa Rock.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well. Can y'all hear me?
We can.
Yes.
All right, well, my report, Joey Salivi took home the championship belt as the People's Choice Award winner at the first Joe's Grill and DDRH chili championship in March before all this COVID nineteen stuff. And this will be an annual event to raise funds for the fire department. Chris Ganey from Bill's Grill and Patrick took home the owner's choice award from the ten participating teams. And we hope to get more local businesses involved next year. Car show winners were Reese Hadlock in first, Calvin Kelly in second, and Eddie McCord. Our monthly member breakfasts have been suspended until further notice based on the social distancing guidelines set forth by Governor McNamara's executive order. We plan to reschedule the annual taste at Darlington, which was originally set for April twenty-third. And we will be looking for teams and sponsors once we get a new date set. Annual DRA golf tournament has been rescheduled for Wednesday, May twentieth, at Darlington Country Club. Four, four-person captain's choice teams play eighteen holes on the beautifully remodeled course after delicious buffet lunch. Whole sponsorships are still available. The winning team will take home tickets to the Southern five hundred. Thanks to Carolina Bank, Darlington Raceway, Fitness World Dims, and Nationwide Insurance for helping us present this event again this year. And the DRA also plans to continue our Bringing Downtown Alive concert series with its first event, a community karaoke party from seven to ten PM, Thursday, May seventh, at Liberty Lane and Pearl Street. Should the COVID nineteen outbreak continue to limit gatherings, we will reschedule this event two weeks out in the previous state as needed until we can actually have the event. Other things that we can look forward to, we have in our race week party, the Friday night of race week on September fourth, another Bringing Downtown Live Free Concert, Thursday, October twenty-second, at Liberty. Thank you, members.
All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce was supposed to be Nancy Matthews, Howard Garland is going to be presenting that.
You know, I have something that was provided to me by the Chamber. I'll read it. As always, the Chamber is in the planning stages of Freedom Fest, which will be held July eleventh, twenty twenty, at the Darlington Raceway. The stage is ordered, the band is booked, the rides are being reserved, and vendors are reserving spots. And the new fireworks company has the date on their calendar. The Chamber of Commerce is proceeding with Freedom Fest, however, we do have two backup contingency plans in case we're continuing to practice social distancing. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce would like to request sponsorship from City of Darlington for Freedom Fest twenty twenty and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars is this historically has been the amount that the city has done. In years past, the city has been one of our best sponsors in this event, and the Chamber hopes to do it again for twenty twenty. Freedom Fest is the Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce's annual Independence Day celebration family event at Darlington Raceway. It's a large-scale event that brings thousands of people to our beautiful community each year, many of whom come from outside of our county and outside of our state. This event places Darlington in the spotlight and contributes not only to the local economy but also to the growth of tourism. Through the support of the city, the event has continued to grow exponentially in size, so much that we're bringing in a marketing company, iHeart Media, to assist in marketing the event throughout South Carolina. The Chamber has also begun a recovery plan for City of Darlington and our businesses, part of a grand reopening of our beautiful Darlington. The Chamber, and hopefully in partnership with City of Darlington, plans to do a giant ribbon cutting for Darlington once the crisis has passed. We hope we can all come together in our public square. The Chamber is planning on inviting all citizens and businesses to the square to cut the ribbon, to reopen our city for future business, and invite restaurants to participate and offer food and beverages for people in attendance. This hopefully will jumpstart the recovery and the morale of our great community. Prior to the ribbon cutting, we have a parade with a lineup of cars, golf carts, and bands that would come through town with sirens and lights to welcome everyone from isolation to the grand reopening of Darlington. That was submitted by Harry Hobbs and Anna DeWitt with the Darlington Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Howard. All right. I think Lisa, you're going to present citizens wishing to appear before city council. Did you have any comments from any citizens, Lisa?
I have not received any by email, mail, or on Facebook here that were not just general questions that could be answered.
Listen, I want to speak for a second. Let's just make sure next time, seven days before we have the meeting, if we could just daily put out how that people can put in questions, that way we can have a clear line of communication.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I don't think we knew at the time, seven days ago, how we were going to do this.
Yeah, this was thrown together. We apologize if somebody didn't get anything in. Again, this was all thrown together quickly so we could go ahead and continue this, so we'll do that for sure next time if we have to continue this way. All right, number seven, unfinished business. A public hearing ordinance two thousand twenty dash oh one, property purchase seventeen fifty-five, Harry Bird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero six three, one hundred sixteen acres for six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields. Is the public hearing ordinance. Do we have anything on that?
So, have we said it?
Any comments about it, written or otherwise?
Okay. All right, Elaine?
I was just saying, are we at a point where we can set the public hearing? I mean, can we, you know, especially with all of the coronavirus and all of that, can we even think of that?
Lisa, you posted it out when?
It has been posted in the newspaper of record for the county prior to the meeting, roughly thirty-one days before. So people did have the opportunity to write in their comments that entire time.
And, and we have it, I got you, so.
It says it was done thirty-one days ago. All right, do we need to make a motion on this to approve it, the public hearing ordinance?
Okay. I make the motion that we do have a public hearing, that the public hearing ordinance that we approved that. Twenty twenty dash zero one, property purpose, purchase seventeen fifty-five, Harry Bird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six, that's zero 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 two zero six three, one hundred and sixteen acres at six hundred thousand for ball fields.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Say your name if you will and say. Seagars, yes.
Sheila, yes.
Bryant, yes. Nettles, yes.
Milling, yes.
Reed, yes.
Curtis Boyd, yes. All right, we have a hundred percent on that, it's passed. All right, unfinished business, part B, second reading ordinance, two thousand twenty dash oh one, property purchase seventeen fifty-five highway, Harry Bird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero six three, four hundred sixteen acres for six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields.
Mr. Mayor, John Milling here, just have a question. The, on the part A for number seven, it appeared that Ms. Reed was making a motion that we have a public hearing. I'm trying to understand whether we have just had a public hearing since notice has been given, or are we making, was she making a motion to have a public hearing at some point in the future?
The public hearings are, I mean, had, but Elaine, what was your motion?
The, what we, what we had is seven A was a public hearing at which there was no input. So what we're really having now is a motion to pass the ordinance following a public hearing.
Yeah, correct. What, what I clarified it once he maybe understand that they, that the notices, we had had thirty, it had been.
Right, but I just wanted everybody to understand, you made a motion to have a public hearing, but in reality, we were having a public hearing at that time, and Lisa Rock was indicating that no one had provided any comment in connection with that public hearing. And so now we are moving to the question of whether or not we are going to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
But John, that's what I was saying, I corrected myself and said, we are proving that we are approved the public hearing ordinance. That's what, so that, I'm taking it as this a done deal.
Yeah, that's good, we're good.
Okay.
All right.
So Councilman Backus, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on this, um, property, if we purchased this property and it remains in the county, um, how are we going to police this property? Are we going to have, um, question, how are we going to police this property? Since it's located in the county.
Chief Washington? Lisa?
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't believe that we will have jurisdiction out there, because unless that property is within the city limits of Darlington, the city police will not have any jurisdiction there, which also raises an issue about the fire response as well, so we may want to get Chief Kavanaugh to chime in as it relates to the fire response.
When it comes to the. May I say something?
Go ahead, Brian.
When it comes to the police response, we had the mutual aid agreement with the sheriff's department. Couldn't we assume that they would help? But then it comes to if we have police presence at our ballgames, would our city officers still be allowed to be out there for the police presence, and if something was to come up, could they then call the sheriff's office to have some official?
The mutual aid agreement doesn't work like that, Councilman Gardner. The mutual aid agreement is such that because it's the sheriff's office of responsibility, then we would have to assist them, because that is in, you know, that's in their purview, not ours. It's their jurisdiction, not ours. So I could not call them to assist me in their jurisdiction.
Mayor?
Yes, please, sir.
Mayor, this is like any other piece of city property that we own that is not in the corporate limit, such as the sewer treatment plant and other property. Obviously, our officers can be there. I'm not exactly sure what the question is.
Say one more time, you cut out a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, this is just like any other city property that we own that is not in our jurisdiction. Uh, for example, this water, wastewater treatment plant is not in the city limits, but I'm sure that our officers have gone out there and checked it, and fire as well. So I don't exactly understand what the question is, Ms. Backus.
Well, let me, if I made Mayor Boyd respond to, uh, to, to, um, Ms. Rock's response, there's a difference between going and checking on a property and having arrest powers within that jurisdiction. Those are two totally different things. If we just ride by a piece of property, that's one thing. But to be able to police a piece of property and, and have arrest powers with, um, you know, for the people that are in that particular jurisdiction, those are two totally separate things. And so I don't want to mix apples and oranges here.
I'm not sure what Ms. Backus's question was then.
So if there's an event at the baseball field, at the company, there's some games going on, there's always should be police at the games. The question is, who has the authority to police the property during events?
At this present point, as a police chief, I would say that the sheriff's office would have that authority.
Okay, so. From, okay, so a lot of this is contingent on the fact that we can annex properties. Is that still on the table? Does that seem like viable options for us in purchasing this?
We were told by the camp, by the Charles Stewart, that if we didn't get the racetrack when we talked with him, if they were not able to annex in, that, that we would still get city, we would still get the hospitality funds from if we put a property out there. If we put a restaurant or anything like that, was the question, if we would be able to retain hospitality or funds from the restaurant. And they confirmed that we would, with Charles Stewart confirmed that to us.
Okay.
So this is, this is on the council that they have at the county now. Going to the event that the council may change at the next election.
It would be in writing.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Is that bound the next council? I don't think it bound the next council, does it, Mr. Gardner?
They would have to take it up, and, um, county council, we're going to change that agreement, would have to pass a similar ordinance or resolution, whatever way they passed it, to enter into the agreement to reverse such agreement.
Right, that's my question. The question, that's the point I'm making, is the next council that comes up is not bound by that agreement. The next council.
They'd have to take affirmative action to undo it.
Right.
I just said, I'm just making a point. That the next county do have an option of not sticking to the agreement. Mr. Garland?
If you, if you get an agreement signed by the county, I, I feel like they would honor it if it's something that they sign.
Yeah.
They would pay the hospitality tax back for a certain number of years. We have standing agreements with the school district for Blue Street. We had a standing agreement with the school district. We had a standing agreement with the school district for Virgil Wells Stadium before we bought that. We have a standing agreement with the school district for the tennis courts where we share the cost half and half with them. This is slightly different, but we've had a good reception from the county administrator. He's talked individually with county council members and those that are currently on board have no objection to that. But that being said, we don't have anything right now in writing, but we do feel good about them giving us the hospitality funds that we would collect on side as concessions. Now, the accommodations is a little different because that goes to the state of South Carolina through the, um, the tax commission that would have to come back to the county, and the county would have to cut that check to us if we ever were able to build a hotel motel on that site.
All right.
And suddenly approved of building a hotel. Correct.
And, and assuming that we don't get the ability to annex it in, um, so.
But Dallas, those, those, those measures would assure us of those monetary benefits.
We also have, I'm assuming that you got the letter from PD Electric saying that we, of course, they'll give us a loan. We don't, we're not looking to try to get a loan on that, but they're already willing to give a three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Uh, they had told me and Howard Nettles both, when we spoke out there, that they had additional money that they would be able to do in the following year, but they would be willing to start out with a three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant toward it also.
So. Did we make a motion? Do we need a motion?
We do. Do we have a motion? To purchase the property?
Well. I make a motion on the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash zero one, dash property per purchase seventeen fifty-five Harry Bird Highway, Olin Curvin, one two six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero six three, one hundred and sixteen acres at six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields.
Thank you, Elaine. Do we have a second?
It is to approve, is to approve.
Do we have a second motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Mr. Seaggers?
Seaggers. Seaggers basket. I'm going Reed, yes.
Mr. Seaggers? Yeah, does Michael? Bill, does Mr. Seaggers have his mic on?
Who's what he dropped off? Hang on.
Okay, I'll call him. All right, Mrs. Backus?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Milling?
Yes.
Mr. Nettles?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed, you already, you already made the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd, yes. We're waiting on Mr. Gardner. I mean, Mr. Seaggers, I mean. Somebody's calling.
It's officially passed. Do we have to wait on him?
I don't know.
I guess everyone has to vote, but he's technically left the meeting.
John Seaggers is saying that his, his picture froze and it's just sitting there. He's trying to get back on now. Howard, do we need to wait for him, or can you say what he said, or, um, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that. Um, what you may want to do is just wait a minute or two and see if we were able to get him back on. Um, we did have something else. I can, I can talk about the chamber. Um, that was supposed to be a motion to come out of that to, um, sponsor the fifteen thousand dollars. Even faster, and just wanted to be able to mention that. So since we're waiting. Wait on that, while, when you said that, or we're just gonna talk about it later? Uh, well, I, I believe the notes said that they, they wanted it to be brought up tonight. That's, uh, you check the notes here.
That's correct, Howard. Um, Anna DeWitt sent me an email because I'm also on the chamber board, and we were supposed to discuss that, I believe. We just somehow kind of skipped past it. So.
Yeah, but it, it, usually we don't, unless they ask, we don't, that, we don't wait on it, but I know.
Yeah, it's not even an item on the list as well. Well, that's what I was, that's why I posed a question. Um. Yeah, it's not even an item. So I don't know how we would vote on that without giving the public, you know, prior notice. And it's not anywhere, their information, correct? Yeah, I mean, we can take it for information, of course. No, no, is it in their information that, anything we didn't present by that? I just didn't see it anywhere. That's why I'm asking the question.
And. With all of us voting without that, can we just note that we had technical difficulties and?
Well, we wait one more second here, let's see.
I have, I have him on the phone and I'm working with him on this, so bear with me.
Okay. That would be better to have everybody.
Unanimous, okay. So it is a big item.
Mr. Lynch, we could also get him to call in by phone and just he wouldn't be on a video feed if that's easier for him for this meeting.
Bill, if you can put him on speakerphone, maybe then you can do that. All right, Bill, you getting closer?
Yeah, he's, uh, he's gonna dial into the meeting. Bear with him.
I don't want him to be left out.
Right.
Technology is great as long as it works.
I say that all the time.
Oh, I know.
Well, I'm missing my monthly chocolate fix. What, how, what am I gonna do about my candy?
We should have dropped you some off at the door.
I'm telling you.
Well, make sure you get some.
Seem right. I'm sitting here without, can't reach into anything here. Try not to keep too much here.
Kind of like being on the Brady Bunch with everybody up on the screen like that.
Yeah.
Hey, man.
You can call it what you want, but it is nice to socialize with other people.
Yeah, I think after this, everybody won't mind social, please, social distancing.
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Mr. Seaggers, thank you for joining back with us.
I can hear.
Okay. All right, Mr. Seaggers, everybody has voted on item B, number seven, B. Everybody has voted, uh, yes, we were waiting on your vote for the second reading ordinance.
Seaggers, yes.
Well, then we have a unanimous vote to purchase the second reading or for the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash oh one, for the property purchase of seventeen fifty-five Harry Bird Highway from Olin Curvin, one two six dash oh two dash oh, one two six dash zero zero dash oh two dash zero six three, one hundred sixteen acres for six hundred thousand dollars for ball fields. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, do you want to go back to, um, the chamber commerce? I don't think we can go back to that because as someone pointed out, it wasn't actually on the agenda. Okay, I just want to make sure. Thanks, but, uh, I want to confirm. All right, we can bring that up next time. We'll discuss it and put it on the agenda for next time. Item eight, new business, A, the USDA grant award acceptance for police cars. I'm assuming that's some, Mr. Chief. Chief Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and members of council and Adam Clark. Um, I think of Mr. Garland distributed, um, the grant, um, applica, actually, we've already applied for the grant. Uh, we've been approved, um, uh, for the grant, and tonight, um, we just need to vote to accept the grant. The grant is for, the total grant is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The, um, the total amount of the project, excuse me, is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The federal government is going to give us fifty thousand dollars towards, um, towards, uh, that project. Um, it is through the USDA Community Facilities, um, grant, um, we would be, we'll be purchasing three patrol cars for the city of Darlington.
Very good job. Thank you, sir, for doing that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the USA USDA grant award acceptance for the police cars?
I'll motion that we approve the USDA grant award acceptance for the police cars.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Sheila. All right. All right, so do we have everybody in favor?
Seaggers, yes.
Milling.
Nettles, yes, yes.
Reed?
Gardner, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and yes for me. All right, so the motion is passed for the USA USDA grant award acceptance for the police cars. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner has his hand up.
Yep, we, um, Stuart Hux is here with USDA tonight also. He needs to explain some of the requirements of the grant. It's something that's, is required at every public meeting before we accept the USDA grant. I believe we have Stuart Hux with us, don't we, Bill? Lynch?
Yes, and I just unmuted him.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, just a few things to, to make you aware of. Uh, Chief Washington did a good job explaining where we are. Um, we made, you made application. We're at to the point now in the process where we're ready to fund the request in the amount of fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, does everybody have a copy of the letter conditions for this project? I had, I had sent, I know Howard's got one, and I sent him the, uh, forms. There were ten forms that go along with the letter conditions that will need to be signed and attested and returned to me so that we can, uh, obligate the funds or commit the funds for this project.
We got those today. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got those today, so we have not sent them to council yet. We've made copies, but we haven't, we haven't, actually dispersed the council.
Okay, so I don't think so.
One of those is the grant resolution. If you will record tonight's vote on that, and then when you have it signed and attested, you can just, uh, if you scan them and email them back to me, that'll be fine.
Stuart, is there anything? Sorry, um, is there anything?
Go ahead.
Is you need to have, is you need to read tonight? Uh, uh, we've already accepted the grant. I know it used to be when you were in person with us that we would sign probably fifteen or twenty things along with the city seal. Would we just do that all right tomorrow and have it notarized by the, uh, Ms. Prision? Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Those, those are the, uh, ten things that I sent you, uh, on email today, so that'd be fine. If you'll just get those, uh, signed and attested and, uh, returned to me, that'd give me what I need. There'll be some, there'll be some additional things that I'll send you tomorrow. It'll be things that, information that I need for you to get back to me in addition to those forms. And it'll be simple things like, uh, one of them is I need an updated list of council members' names. Uh, you need to understand that you have six months to complete this project. Uh, we'll need, I need copies of the bids for the vehicles, which I, I'm assuming you're going through state purchasing. Is that correct for these vehicles?
You'd have to ask Chief Washington about that.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so the procurement procedures have been met because the state take, takes care of all the bidding requirements for you. So I'll just need a copy of the, uh, invoice or the quote, uh, based on whatever type of vehicle you're getting. You'll send those to me. Let me approve those upfront prior to us dispersing the money. I need that. I'll send you a, uh, form that need to record the race and gender of council members and employees so that I can do our compliance review, and you can just give me that information. I'll complete the review based on that. Uh, there'll be some forms that we'll need to complete once we close the grant and disperse the money, and that'll be closer to time that you actually take delivery of the vehicles. So what, what is the lead time or lag time on the vehicles? And I guess, I guess you'll have to get the vehicles and then get them striped and put radios and lights and everything on them too. So you'll, you'll be taking them as turnkey. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll work through that process as, as we get further along in there. Is that something you can take immediate delivery on, or are they gonna have to order that from the factory? Do you know, do they have it on the lot?
We're gonna most likely have, we're gonna most likely have to order them. Initially, when you and I spoke and we worked on this, uh, grant proposal, um, we were trying to get sedans. Um, we've just been notified about thirty days ago that they're not making any more, um, police sedans. Um, and in fact, some of the folks that have, who had orders in, their orders were canceled. So, um, we may need to make some adjustments, um, as it relates to, to what we'll be, um, ordering. But I'll get in touch with you, and we'll go over all of that.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. So, yeah, there, there'll be a process we'll work through to get, get from where we are tonight, where we dispersed the money. But this is an important first step for, uh, council to vote to accept the letter. So I appreciate, uh, Chief Washington, appreciate your help getting to this point, Howard. Thank you for, for what you've done, and, uh, we'll move forward from here.
And while Stuart's here, let me mention that this is the seventh grant that the city of Darlington has received since two thousand eight. We have used it, uh, to refurbish our new courtroom. We've used it for police cars several times. Also, for numerous pieces of street equipment for the street and sanitation department. So thanks to Stuart Hudson and his staff in Florence for all the work they've done for city of Darlington over the years. Thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate, thank y'all for what you do.
Okay. All right, uh, new business part B, uh, resolution adoption of two thousand eighteen international building code. Is that Alex?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, a few months ago, the, uh, state adopted the two thousand and eighteen codes. And I believe we came to y'all a couple of years ago about adopting the two thousand and fifteen, so we just need to two thousand and eighteen. Um, we need to adopt those, and also, we're looking to adopt chapter one, um, administrative portion of.
Okay, we just need a motion, we just need a motion on that. We have a motion to adopt, um, resolution adoption, two thousand eighteen international building code.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution adoption, two thousand eighteen international building code.
Do we have a second?
I would.
Three seconds.
All right, Seaggers? All right, Siggers?
Yeah, yes.
Gardner? Bryant?
Yes, I'm sorry. That was muted.
I think Millen, you seconded it, Howard Nettles?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
All right, and Boyd, yes. All right, so it is passed for the Resolution Adoption of two thousand eighteen International Building Code. All right, underneath business, part C, Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives. I think Lisa, you can present that.
Thank you. As many people have noticed, the old huddle house is being transformed into Holt Brothers Express. In twenty seventeen. This council approved economic development incentive packages. Will have to individually come before you to be approved, and this is one of those such packages. And that is, the incentive agreements included in your package, and I'll read highlights of it to you. For the record. The development will locate at fifteen oh three South Main Street. The. February twenty twenty and plans to be fully operational by summer twenty twenty. And of course, obviously, this application was made prior to the COVID nineteen. I'm not certain that that's gonna affect it. Since it is gonna be another dining. More of a. They develop this location through January twenty thirty, at least. The development intends to invest a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital expenses. They intend to hire as many as twenty five full-time employees. In fact, they intend to hire with a preference for those living in Darlington County. And the combined investment of the development, including a credit of fifty thousand dollars per job created exceeds one million dollars. In return for this investment, development is requesting that the city provide the following reimbursement of. Then a building permit during the initial. Raise. Reimbursement of business license taxes in the following manner, one hundred percent for the first taxable year of operation or portion thereof. Sixty-six percent for the second taxable year of operation and thirty-three percent for the third year of taxable operation. And they are requesting the reimbursement of local hospitality taxes at a rate of fifty percent for a period of twelve months. Now, based on our calculations and good, good faith estimates for the cost of fiscal improvement, jobs created. The development will meet or exceed the minimum investment requirements. Based on business anticipated business license fee of six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents, additional property. Additional utilities revenue of approximately seven hundred dollars annually and a job investment credit of. One million, two hundred and fifty thousand based on twenty-five employees. Additionally, the development will improve the interest to the city by having a derelict building is at our gateway. The amount being sentenced granted to development shall not exceed the value of the direct or indirect benefits of the development. And that's clear when you're talking about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of capital investment plus one point two jobs. We're certainly not gonna be able to give them anything close to that back. Now, these are obviously, the program is, these incentives were made based on the program. So approved in twenty seventeen and. These are to be reviewed on. These are also reimbursement incentives, so the developer will have to submit a request for incentive repayment. And prove that they've. They will pay their hospitality taxes every month and then on the July thirtieth. Thirty-first of each year, they will submit the form to request those funds back. Based on the.
All right. So do we, if we approve this? Would we automatically write them back, for example, a check for the business licenses of six hundred, they haven't applied for business licenses yet, correct?
No, sir, they will pay upfront for every one of these things.
Right.
Um, the thing that will be given them July thirty-first of next year. By to get their building permit fees back, their business license tax back and their hospitality tax back at a rate of fifty percent. And they have to show that they have those employees and that investment was made before we write them a check. They gotta get paid first, and then if they don't happen to open or something happens. They're not gonna get any money. The total amount, when you figure, I haven't gotten the figures for the final. Building permit fees, but you're talking, talking around seven thousand now that we're.
Say one more time, you're cutting out a little bit.
We're talking about, about seven thousand dollars of incentive money, essentially.
That we will be returning. We will be returning that amount. Or is that fifty percent of it?
The amount we will be returning, yes, ma'am.
That we based on the hospitality taxes? Is included in that seven thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, so if they pay, let's say, and I'm using a round number just for round number sake. They pay a thousand dollars. A month of hospitality tax they collect. They submit that to the city. Every month. In July of the, of next year, they ask for half of that back. And we write them a check, half of what they actually collect. So if they, you know, think they're gonna get a thousand dollars a month and they get more. We'll give them back more, but we'll be getting more too.
Right, so if they did do that, would it be twelve thousand dollars, they would get six thousand dollars back plus. The six twenty-nine, eleven twenty and the seven oh one, so they would get six, seven, around eight thousand dollars back, but we would then.
They wouldn't get the property tax money back, mayor, they will be getting the building permit fees, half the hospitality tax and then the business license fee.
But they get all of the business license. The only fifty percent is the hospitality.
Yes, 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 Miss Reed.
Okay.
They would get number one, two and three.
Tax for one year. And it'll be all of the business license tax for their very first year or portion thereof. So when they go into business this summer and get their business license, whatever they pay, they're gonna get back next year. Then they will get sixty-six percent of whatever their business license fee is the second year of operation. And then the third year, they'll get thirty-three percent, assuming that they meet the standards and continue to be open and continue to.
After three years, Lisa, they would have nothing coming back.
Correct.
And after one year, they would have nothing coming back on the hospitality tax.
Correct. After twelve months, they will not have any money coming back from hospitality.
Additional property, additional property tax revenue of eleven twenty annually, that's one time?
The additional property taxes, the improvement value to their property, that's not something that we can. Adjust. And as required by law, we have to state what their improvement and their investment is gonna be and how that will financially impact the city and county.
And if for some reason they did not meet their benchmarks, we would not be obligated to comply with our agreement.
Correct.
Yes, I see that.
Okay.
Sound like a good deal.
Well, they have definitely already made it look a lot better out there, I think, so.
Yeah.
Better than it was looking. I know that they will continue. After all this is over. So do we have a motion to approve? New business, part C, Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives.
I'll second.
According to our packet, that has an ordinance number of twenty twenty dash zero three. So Elaine, you probably need to use that in your motion.
All right. I just will put my little paper away with all that numbers on it. Okay, here we go, I'm looking at the ordinance, okay. I make the motion that we approve the Holt, the Holt Brothers Economic Development Center. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three.
I will second that motion.
All right, Howard? Mr. Siggers? You have a motion? Do you have a vote? We have Howard, John Siggers?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Backus?
A vote, yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. All right.
Yes.
Great, God bless you, you've made a motion, so. All right, so we have it passed for the Holt Brothers Economic Development Incentives, ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh three, it's passed. All right, new business, D, Resolution, Project Peach granting consent to the inclusion of certain property within the Joint County Industrial Park of Darlington and Lee Counties. Howard?
This should be. No discussion, yes, yes, yes.
Yes, this is, this is the thing we've been waiting for, that we're all excited about, the. One hundred and forty-two million dollar expansion by Georgia Pacific, we can talk openly about that now. The county had their third reading on the industrial park last night. Which is mostly includes the Georgia Pacific property at the corner of Avenue D and Old Florence Highway. In the inclusion of the Joint County Industrial Park of Darlington and Lee Counties. So all we're doing is, we don't have to have an ordinance, it's just a resolution adopting what the county passed last night. And once we get past this and we get away from the non-disclosure agreement which we signed with Georgia Pacific. We can talk about in executive session what this means financially for the city of Darlington, which is quite a windfall, I'm super excited about it. But we can't really go into any details on that right now, but we. Staff or just recommendation of passing this resolution quickly as you can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution for Project Peach granting consent to the inclusion of certain property within the Joint County Industrial Park of Darlington and Lee Counties.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Mr. Siggers, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
This is. Mrs. Backus, you, you, did you second it?
I did.
Okay, all right, Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Mr. Nettles?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And yes for Boyd. All right, so we have in favor, all in favor, for the resolution to pass Project Peach granting consent to the inclusion of certain property within the Joint County. Industrial Park of Darlington and Lee Counties. Okay. Number nine, receive as information, we have department head reports that everyone has been given. If any council members may ask any questions at this time. Mr. Siggers, do you have any questions for the camp, for the department heads?
I do not.
Mrs. Backus?
I do not.
Mr. Gardner?
I do not.
Mr. Millen?
I do not.
Mr. Nettles?
I do not.
This is Reed?
I deny.
All right, I just have, I don't have a question, I just asked Chief Washington, is it possible? With all this going on, that maybe you can just enlighten everybody, especially with the stay-at-home order today, that we could actually have something from you out there? Stating what everybody's confirmed and what they need to do, not do, so forth.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the governor's order, while it was, well, I don't wanna say was specific and then it lacked clarity. It, it, it does, it is this, it lacks some clarity as it relates to the stay-at-home order. He's saying stay home, but he also offered a couple of different, a couple of different instances. Where it would be okay for people to be out. Our folks have been told to encourage people to, to go home if they, you know. Now, if they're out doing something legitimate as it relates to the governor's order, then obviously, you know, we won't have any jurisdiction as it relates there. But we're encouraging people to stay home as much as possible. In fact, we put some, we put something on our Facebook account today and on our Facebook page, and we've been putting things on there periodically. Over the last week or so. We've also been encouraging our employees, both police and fire to. We've actually been discouraging them from having too much personal contact with the public, because as I'm sure most of you all have seen. In some of the other cities across the country, I think Detroit, they're. This, this virus has broken out in some of the departments and it has created havoc. And so we definitely don't want anything like that here within our departments, and so we have been encouraging them to practice social distancing as much as possible. If there are calls that can be handled over the phone, then they handle the calls over the phone. N ninety-five masks have been distributed to all of our full-time personnel. They have, they can use them at their discretion, but in instances where they are transporting people. For whatever reason, whether it be to jail or for some other reasons, they have. They are required to wear those N ninety-five masks because of the close confined space of a vehicle. But that's kind of where we're at right now, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all have for me.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Chief, I just appreciate seeing the officers in the neighborhoods, it's been nice and heard it from the community as well.
Thank you so much.
So Chief, we're not having any major problems and everybody's kind of cooperating with the parks, right?
Yes, ma'am, so far, Mr. Garland and I spoke last week about some other concerns that I have with. With what's going on with people and not working. We will discuss that hopefully in executive session at our next meeting, or maybe I'll try to make the rounds over the next week or so. And talk with each one of you all individually and express some concerns that I have, that I've shared with Mr. Garland.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, thank you, Chief Washington.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, and again, just to reiterate, please, do what the governor has asked. You know, he's not told you that you gotta lock yourself in a house, don't put that fear in your, in yourself. It is beautiful outside, but stay at home. If you gotta get out and do what it's supposed to have to do, it's fine, but let's get this thing over with and. Get everybody, all these businesses back up and going and get our, our world back on track, so we appreciate everybody working together. And thank all the department heads and everybody else. Any council comments, Mr. Siggers, any comments?
No, I don't.
Mrs. Backus, any comments?
No, no.
Mr. Gardner, any comments?
Just thank you to the city administration for all you're doing.
Mr. Millen?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Nettles?
Nothing additional here.
Mrs. Reed?
Nothing, just want everybody to be safe, thank you.
I would like to thank everybody on council for working with us on all the projects that we're doing. This was, I think, extraordinary today for everybody to get online and work together as quick as we did. I think other than losing one for a moment, we got back home, Mr. Siggers brought back home, I think everything went really well. And thank you, everybody in the city departments and all around for working together, I think the city has been safe and doing well. I think with the city has been safe and doing well. Uh, we've had some cases, but it looks like we've done remarkable. Um, so just continue to do what we're supposed to do. So hopefully, as you said, we can all get back on a normal schedule.
Mayor.
Good buddy, yes.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gardner?
I apologize. I was gonna run. Just, um, just so I understand, the seven eight, seventeen fifty-five here, Berah Highway, that ordinance still has the annexation, annexation language in it, correct?
I think we said that we could, do we have to take that out or do you leave it in?
That's why, I guess that was my question. Uh, I, I, and I was, my battery died and I never ended up in my car, so I didn't, wasn't sure if that language was still there.
My understanding that we passed it with the understanding that, uh, the county has agreed to it, we're still gonna pursue that, uh, strongly. The only thing that's, uh, holding us back from the annexation is the racetrack. Uh, they already expressed, Kerry expressed interest that, uh, they would be more than willing to try to talk with and work with us but at this time with the virus going on, that they have other issues going on in this moment. Of course, we all do. Uh, but again, um, I don't, I think we can make that work.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Alright, uh, do I have a motion? Well, before we adjourn, a reminder that Monday, April the thirteenth, two thousand twenty at six P M, city council work session. And then Tuesday, May fifth, uh, twenty twenty six thirty P M, our monthly city council meeting. Uh, we will more than likely on April the thirteenth be doing it again via the web here. Uh, we'll see. More than likely that way, but then May fifth, we'll determine whether or not we'll be online or either actually in the, uh, room together. Alright.
What time is that work session? What time is that?
The session is April the thirteenth at six P M.
No, I thought it was the fourteenth. I thought it was April the fourteenth.
Yeah, I've got it on the paper, April thirteenth then.
Oh, okay.
Let's look real quick. April thirteenth is a Monday. It's finally the one, Monday or Tuesday.
That's, that's exactly right.
Are you okay with that, Sheila?
So it's the thirteenth, okay, alright.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, everybody good with that?
At six o'clock?
At six o'clock, yes.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
That's not an official motion. Official motion is stated.
I moved, we adjourned. Me, April the seventh, uh, city council meeting.
Alright. Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Ah.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, everyone. Y'all have a wonderful night. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Can we still stick around and chat? Bye, Brian. Y'all have a good evening.
I have my chocolates, if I, that would be great.
I'll be back in a few minutes and bring you some chocolate tonight.
I'll, I'll talk with you. I, I won't leave you hanging like that, man. I'll talk to you if you need somebody.
Brian, Brian's been logged up too long.
Oh, you're so crazy.
Thank y'all.
Have a good night, everyone. God bless.
You all too.
Bye, Howard.
Bye, lady. Take care.
Okay, all I do is just push my button.
Um.
I don't see a sign out or nothing. I thought, uh, that's what I'm looking for.
It should say leave meeting at the bottom of the right-hand screen there.